Good afternoon. We will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for June 25, 2019. And I would like to have the clerk call the roll, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Call deal.
Here.
President Simon-Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minnetonka is on vacation. Vice President Raymond.
Here.
And the clerk, that's me, I am here. Madam President, we have a quarrel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Would Mr. Constantino lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Constantino, and thank you for the great job your graduates did at their graduation. Not a single one of those people takes it for granted, and we appreciate that. Okay, our next item is public comment. I do want to say before we begin public comment that you will notice that there is nothing related to the superintendent on our, or the superintendent's status on our agenda. That is noticed for a special meeting on July 1. People are free to make public comment, but you will note that the Board will not have a discussion of any of that situation on this agenda. So just wanted to let everyone know that, and we'll go ahead with public comment.
Margaret Martini.
Welcome, Ms. Martini.
Good afternoon, Board members. I have compiled a few things that I wanted to speak on, on the data mining and et cetera, and I have some very credible resources. So I'd like you to review all of them. I'm just going to pick a few things. This is from Verywell Family, very well thought of resource on family issues, and these will be direct quotes from their article. And it says, "By tracking and gathering all of this information, companies are building information-rich profiles on students, their individual learning styles, and their academic successes." The companies that are best at mining data from students can, excuse me, collect as many as 10 million unique data points on each student each day. That's more information than Netflix or Facebook can collect on their users." Then going further, it said, "It could also be used to build profiles that later could be used by college administration officers, military recruiters, and even employers looking for a specific skill set." And there are relatively no regulations on how the information can be used, and having no control over how your students' information is shared and distributed could end up being a real disservice to your student. Going further, it says, "The downside is that this information could also keep your student from getting into better classes, special schools within the district, if they are used to screen your child or to build a profile on them." The next information comes from U.S. Parents Involved in Education. In the name of personalized and social-emotional learning, students are required to interact with sophisticated software that vacuums up enormous amounts of data, not only their knowledge, but their mindset and attitudes. Some of this software comes in the form of video games, which gather sensitive data while heightening the propensity towards addiction. In Georgia, even the youngest schoolchildren are put on video games as a means of assessment. Digital software uses the data to create algorithms that predict a child's future behavior, capabilities, or accomplishments based on analyzing keystrokes. The federal government even twouts software that observes students' physiological reactions to lessons and feeds that data into algorithms. I'm going to skip forward here and just make the closing statement. The days when students' personal information was off limits to prying eyes and when American literature meant American literature are over. Can the same be said of common sense?
Thank you, Ms. Martini.
John Appolito.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I'm the president of Protect Nevada Children, former K-12 teacher, and I have two kids left in the district. Annette Rothman from Renown gave a talk about a week and a half ago at the library here in downtown Washto County. She wrote an article published in the Reno Gazette-Journal on December 2018. The title of the article was "Screen Time Causing Exacerbating Childhood Psychiatric Disorders." There were about 75 or 85, maybe 80, 85 people at her talk. I didn't see any board members. I didn't notice anybody from Washto County School District there, but it's the kind of stuff that you guys should be paying attention to, but it seems like maybe you aren't. Most of the research that I've come across shows that screens and software for young children is detrimental. There is some that shows for high school kids it's okay, but I'm not quite sure why you guys want to get laptops in the hands of kindergarteners, one-to-one devices I'm talking about. One of the more recent reports that came out was a report by Reboot. I think it's a technology-type of thing. It's to elevate critical thinking. And what Reboot discovered, there's a 50-page report, but I give you guys stuff, but it seems like you never read it because nothing seems to ever change, but there is a 50-page report. I'll email it to you. What they said in the report was, quote, "Fourth-grade students who reported using tablets in almost or almost all classes scored 14 points lower on reading portions of tests administered by the federal government than students who reported never using classroom tablets." That's equivalent to a one year of education, an entire year. So you have kids at Nick Polakitis that most likely will be a year behind by the time they get to fourth grade in reading. Again, this is not from me. This is a 50-page report. I'll email it in case you want to take a look at it. Here's the, what you call, executive summary. The National Education Policy Center. What's frustrating is, I believe you guys understand the harm that you're doing. I think this Board has had more information than probably most Boards in the country, yet you want to give a one-to-one device to a kindergartner. It makes absolutely no sense, and I think most of you, especially the ones that have white hair, realize that's not a way to educate kids, especially if you're a teacher. You know that. But I don't know why you're doing it. And I know Katie will sit up there when I'm done and smile and say something that may or may not be true, because that's what she does a lot, and it's very frustrating, Katie. I only have 16 seconds left, so I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
Jeff Church.
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Church.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Church. I run a website, renotaxrevolt.com. First of all, as a reminder, AB 70 states that as of July 1, it requires the Board to reasonably anticipate adequate accommodations. In my opinion, having an overflow room does not constitute that requirement. You must have a room that adequately anticipates attendance. Let's not be the test case. This room won't do. Now, I'm not here to speak about Ms. Davis or her alleged misconduct, if any. I'm speaking on the lack of transparency and the possible intentional untruthful statements made to the public and the media by the Chair, by the President. I'm going to read to you your policy number 9055 entitled Officers and Duties of the Board of Trustees, Section I. Quote, "The President has no authority to individually make decisions about policies created by the Board. The President has no authority to supervise or direct the superintendent," end quote. I and the public still do not know if Ms. Davis requested leave or if she was placed on taxpayer-funded forced leave. If that's the case, forced leave, then we have a potential open-meeting law violation, OML, and a serious integrity issue that affects all Board members and their responsibilities. The Board President simply cannot place the superintendent on admin leave with pay and certainly not without an emergency hearing. The Board President is simply an equal member of the Board with responsibilities to run the trustee meeting. Only the Board can do so in an emergency hearing, and I'm going to quote from the A.G. Manual, quote, "The law specifically allows members of a public body to deliberate but not act information obtained from its counsel in an attorney-client conference. However, any action must be taken in an open meeting," end quote. If there is any evidence that the Board President acted improperly by placing Davis on leave and/or lying to the public and the media, at a minimum, she should step down as President until this matter is resolved. Further, there may exist Nevada ethics issues that should be considered. If such occurred, the President, being elected, cannot just be removed, but the Board can meet in public and censor her or take away, and take away other, or take other actions. Frankly, if true, then she should resign immediately. The trust with the media is broken if that is the case." Now, if any confusion exists, I'm referring to media reports that on June 13, Ms. Davis, the superintendent, was placed on admin leave by the Board President, but the public was not notified until about a week later, and then the Board President allegedly falsely told the public that Ms. Davis had requested the leave and she had no knowledge of any investigation. Simply put, the public needs to know, and the media needs trust in you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
Connie Silvera.
Welcome, Ms. Silvera.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name's Connie Silvera. I'm recently retired, and I've always been interested in coming to these meetings. So that's the reason I'm here. But my first thought I wanted to comment on is the time of day that you have these meetings. Neither your employees nor the parents of the children that you're responsible for can come to these meetings. If you work day shifts, likely you're not going to get off until 3:00 or 4:00, 5:00 o'clock. So any day shift worker can't make it. A night shift worker has to be ready to go by 3:00 or so, so they can't possibly make it. So you're left with only those that maybe work graveyard, and I just think that that's, maybe there's a good reason for the 2:00 time that I just don't know about, but I think you should consider making these meetings more transparent and open, not only to the public, but to your employees that you're responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvera. And you'll be pleased to know, this is our last meeting, starting at 2:00 p.m.
Oh, good.
We will be starting at 4:00. Meetings that start after July 1.
Good. That'll help. Thank you.
Elise Weatherly.
Welcome, Ms. Weatherly.
Thank you. Elise Weatherly, Washto County resident. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Taylor for looking into the situation where TMCC High School rejected two ACE High School students, simply it would seem, based on the timing of their transcripts. I think it's something that needs to be investigated, and I'm wondering, too, if anybody's actually listening. I noticed that most people have websites and things. I have a website called thenewboreans.com. My business is called The King's Conduits. I'm not sure if you know that everything that we say, everything that we do, and everything that we think is public record. It's being recorded, and eventually there will be a court case, and everybody will stand on trial. I'm not sure if you guys know that or not. I also wanted to let you know that I was told by a 15-year-old that, he said, "Get off of Facebook. All Mark Zuckerberg wants is to find a profile on you so he can send certain ads." They actually did a test in a university. A professor guised himself as two different people, and they tested it out, and guess what? They got different ads based on what kind of a person they were. So the data mining, it's a really good way of somebody making some money. So I just want you guys to be really careful about that, if you wouldn't mind. I also heard about the timing, which is good, but I will say that this building is very hard to find a parking place in, and I know that costs money, you know? Having a big building to meet and having someplace to park costs money, and I hope that you guys can accommodate that at some point, because parking would be good. I don't know if you guys saw the strike that was going on with teachers and sparks. I went ahead and put out a YouTube video on it, just to get a picture of what they were talking about, right? Basically, what's going on in the schools is that you guys are setting a standards for lowering the standards so lots and lots of kids can graduate, so it looks good to us, okay? It looks good to the community. That's called making a name for yourself. What's happening are the brilliant students are being brushed aside, the ones that don't really care are being coddled, all right? If all we're in this for, you guys, is to make a name for ourselves, then we need to readdress why we're doing this. If you care, then you're going to care about the kids that really want to make a difference in this world, in this community, and they're not being addressed. They are being undressed, pretty much. They're just kind of being brushed aside, and I don't like it, and I can't fight it. Somebody else had said "common sense." My 15-year-old has this idea that common sense is very common, and I said, "No. I have no common sense. I have to be taught on a regular basis what makes sense and what doesn't." That's why I listen to you, teenager. You have got some common sense. I think we dismiss some of the kids because of their age, because they seem so young. So what I would say is, please, let's get out of the status quo. Let's make some changes. By the way, just as a closer, you know what the comparison between Paul Orphan and the priests are? Paul Orphan was a guy that I went to school with. He was the one that is now collecting pears, even though he embezzled millions of dollars from Washto County. He's not held into account like priests.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
Donald Gallimore.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. All righty. We've been kind of here since 2009, pre-Pedro, right in the transition of Heath, trying to get this straightened out. What's happening is that our data, and you guys know it's all over the place, on the dark web, in China, everywhere. And so we're trying to make sure that our data stays in Nevada. That's where we want our data. We don't want our data anywhere else than Nevada. We're supposed to be that great old open country, Wild West state that has its own independence, but yet we're beholden to everybody else, and everybody doesn't use the data. Steve Jobs, Bill Gates, they don't let their kids on the computers. They don't let them use the data. You know, why in the world would we, with our independence, want our kids to be beholden to data? And it's not even Steve Gates and, and Bill Gates and Steve Jobs and anyone who owns those companies, Mark Zuckerberg. But anyway, and my main point today is going to be that the data is holding our kids back. Science, and I know a lot of people are red, and they don't believe in science, but science all over the place has said that the kids on the computers are behind kids who don't have the computers or who use them sparingly, who use a hard copy. That's where you learn. You don't have that ADD abrupt eye motion that you do on the computer. It's a scientific fact. Kids don't learn on computers. CNBC has a 10-minute exposé, "Inside the Tech-Free School Where High-Tech Parents Are Sending Their Kids," and that's going to be Katie Schoolov and Katie Bingham. So it's low-tech learning is where it's all about, and it always has been. We had the best country in the world because of low-tech reading, writing, and arithmetic. And now we've got, I don't even know, 34th in the world. The National Education Policy Center says that despite many red flag pressure to adopt personalized learning programs keep mounting, states continue to adopt policies to promote implementation of digital instruction materials but do little to provide for oversight or accountability. So this is running rampant. Even the Rand Corporation says that in a 2018 paper, "Strategies for Implementing Personalized Learning Despite Admining Weak Evidence to Support Its Advocacy."
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore.
All righty. Have a good one.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you. JJ. Okay, our next item is...
Hang on. Oh, nope. Sorry.
... can you stand his action to adopt the agenda? Do you have a motion for proof?
No.
Second by the director of travel. Is there any other discussion? You're hearing none. All those in favor, please sign the papers.
Aye.
And we vote, motion carries. We will next go on to the consent agenda, and I know, President Raymond, you may disclose your, or reference your...
Well, I will be recusing my vote on advice of counsel for Agenda Item 2.27, the appointment of new committee members to the Capital Funding Protection Committee. One of the members put forward to appoint is my brother-in-law. I will be voting on the rest of the consent agenda, just not voting on Agenda Item 2.27.
Are there any members of committees who are being appointed today that have joined us today, and we'd be happy to recognize you if you're here? Yes. Thank you, Justin. Welcome. Okay, and Justin is here for the, that item we just talked about? The... No, he's not her brother-in-law. He is being appointed to the Capital Funding Protection Committee and the Oversight Panel. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Are there any other committee members who are here? Do we have a motion to approve the consent? Oh, okay. We have some public comment on the consent agenda items. Thank you, JJ.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, getting your steps in today, coming from the back.
Real truer in incline this morning. I already got my steps in.
All right.
John Appolito, president of Protect Nevada Children. You can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. Item 2.04 on this social and emotional is one of your veteran teachers told me, quote, and I told you guys this before, "If it wasn't for all this internet stuff, we wouldn't need social and emotional learning," end quote. "I know for a fact that not all the teachers in Washto County School District appreciate the district attempting to turn them into counselors. Last year, I mentioned Washto County School District no longer teaches cursive and keyboarding, and that was to the speaker that the district brought in to educate teachers about the dangers of internet and social media. His response was, quote, "Soon we will be talking to our computers, so kids won't need cursive or keyboarding," end quote. "My oldest son, who's in his third year at Columbia, went through the same incline public schools as my ninth graders. I feel he got a much better education than my twins are getting." Starting next year, the district will teach comprehensive sex ed. The district will teach kids how to have anal sex, how to have oral sex, how to make dental dams. In addition, the websites you approved are fine for adults, but not for 14-year-olds. They encourage abortion. They talk about S&M, oral-to-anus sex, if that even, whatever that even is, blood play. I guarantee this comprehensive sex ed that was just passed is not even close to being age-appropriate for my 14-year-olds, which is when you guys would want to teach this. I wish the district would go back to educating students and leave the social and emotional and comprehensive sex ed for parents, where it belongs. I do understand that a lot of kids need some of this. I get that, but my response is two things. One, sometimes it seems like you all are focusing, the focus is off of education and on social and emotional and comprehensive sex ed. And two, what about the kids that are getting social and emotional and comprehensive sex ed at home? Don't you realize that you're shortchanging these kids? Because I see it in my own family with my kids. That's why I say my oldest child got a better education. One of the things that was brought up here are the profiles that these third-party vendors are creating on our kids. Those will impact their future. New York Times, Politico, entities on the right have written about that. We will never see the profiles that are created on our kids if they log into these third-party vendors that you all are pushing, like Edmodo and all the others. And I know, finally, two years after the data breach, you're not using Edmodo. Why did it take over two years? Why won't you educate the parents? Our bill would have made school districts educate parents on the dangers. Washto County was the only one who stuck up against our bill, SB 403. It passed after you guys gutted it. Clark County loved it. Thank you.
Elise Weatherly.
Elise Weatherly, The King's Conduits, and thenewboreans.com. What I wanted to talk about is, this pretty much, this is about money, right? I mean, all these things are about how much we're going to spend on the springboard English Language Arts Program and things like that, right?
I need you to speak about specific items.
Right, and that is number 203, right? Okay, so what I wanted to do is $141,409.55 is not that much to you guys, but to me, it would pretty much almost wipe me out. What I would like to suggest is taking all of these things from an accounting standpoint and look at the ROI. You guys know what ROI is, right? Return on investment. What I have seen is we spend, Washto County spends a whole lot of money on programs that don't really help anybody. I don't know if you can even hire somebody that's got some of that common sense that we seem to be missing in this community, but I wanted to let you know, too, that most of us balance our accounts, make sure that we don't spend more than we have, make sure that we look towards the future to make sure that we're not spending money now for things that aren't going to pay off in the future. I don't know who you have in your system that can do that, but I would make sure you have a really good accountant in your staff. I noticed that you guys have a chief general counsel. That's because we fight each other. That's because we have opinions that are in opposition. And so you have an attorney, but I don't. I have to stand up here all on my own and hopefully that I'm not going to get thrown in jail or killed by somebody, because I'm going to tell the truth. The thing is, with money, with everything else, with the education, there are a lot of people out there that want to do what's right, all right? I understand that there was all kinds of problems with not only money, but, you know, what we're going to teach our kids in those schools. Let's spend the money on training up the kids in a good way for a future that's going to last, that there's going to be some return on the investment. Find out who your stars are, and focus in on those guys, all right? That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
That's all at this time.
Okay. Thank you, JJ. And just for the public record, all of our approvals of grant applications and our approvals of expenditures do have outcomes and measures of performance associated with them, so we do make sure that those programs are meeting the objectives that are needed for those students, so just wanted to make sure folks know that. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Kelly. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Calvert. Is there any further discussion? And again, we make note of 2.27 for Vice President Raymond. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you. Okay. We will move on to Item 3.01, which is Presentation by Staff and Discussion by the Board Regarding the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Amended Final Budget, Including an Update on Legislative Action Impacting the Budget, Update on the Structural Budget Deficit for the General Fund, Changes to Other District Funds, Discussion of Other Requested Information, and Adoption of the Fiscal Year 2019-20 Amended Final Budget. Mr. Mathers and Mr. Schroeder, thank you for getting us to this point. I know it's been a long journey and a lot of hard work by you all, so please, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer, members of the Board. This is an exciting day for us. We are very proud and happy to present to you and recommend to you a balanced budget for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Can you say that again?
A balanced budget.
Thank you.
For 2019-2020. And so I was not here two years ago when this Board recommended a policy to balance the budget within three fiscal years, but that was two years ago. So we are at a place of having a balanced budget one full year ahead of schedule, so I'm happy to report that. Just as further background, you'll recall that we did present a final budget last month, and that was in accordance with state law, but when we presented that to you, we indicated to you that, based on the deadlines and state law for a budget and based on the legislative session, we had to present that final budget to you without knowing how the legislative session would end, but that we would come back with an amended budget in June, as allowed by law, that reflected the legislative actions that were taken up through June 3 and then signed into law. And so certainly partly, the reason why we can recommend a balanced budget to you is because of the actions taken by the legislature and the governor in the last several days of the legislative session in which those parties increased funding for school districts, all school districts in the state significantly, including Washto County School District. So that got us across the finish line. Again, we're very happy and proud to present this to you. We will try to go through this relatively quickly again, and so let's dive in. For today, we'll first talk about that legislation that was passed, then we'll review the changes to, that we had made to get to this point, and then the that we had made to get to this point, and then the changes to the amended budget that we can take to balance that budget. We will have a slide or two about fiscal year 21, because there are some knowns there. And then we'll, if time willing and, you know, based on your pleasure, review the other funds besides our general fund. And then lastly, there were several special requests of the board. We wanted to close the loop with you, share that information if you would like to go through it. We're happy to go through it. If you choose not to go through it, and we want to look at that for the fiscal year 21 budget process, that's fine, too. I'll leave it up to you. So in terms of legislation that was passed and has now been signed into law, one of the first pieces of legislation that we actually talked to the governor about this spring, and then we saw it happen, was reflected in Assembly Bill 309. And in that bill, the main point of it is we received some additional flexibility for funds that were previously considered categorical funding, but now would be either special block grant or in the general fund. We're waiting for guidance from the Department of Education. But that allows us to use those monies in a more flexible way, in a way that benefits the school district and ultimately helps save money in our budget. Other requirements in AB 309 is that it does require the school districts to reserve monies appropriated by the legislature for salary and benefit increases. So we will do that. I talked about shifting the $2.7 million per year categorical funding to a block grant. It also granted, and this is again, one of the things we asked the governor to consider, would be a waiver of our minimum expenditure requirement, or MRR for textbooks and other instructional software supplies and hardware. We won't need to do that, we don't believe, but it's nice to have that in the toolbox. And then lastly, this is something that hit some of the newspapers. It allows the County Board of Commissioners to adopt a 0.25% sales tax that could be allocated for certain county purposes, or could be allocated for certain school district purposes, or a combination thereof. It's not something certainly we have counted on in our budget. It's not, that's not something we did ask for, but it is in law now per AB 309. Senate Bill 111 was a bill that didn't get a lot of attention, but it basically indicates that any monies appropriated by the legislature for salary or benefit increases must be considered by a fact finder or arbitrator if we get into an arbitration situation, which again, we hope never to have happened. But it is a law that was passed and signed into law. SB 505 was something very specific to Washoe County School District. This was the bill that appropriated the $8.2 million to Washoe County School District and a small part to Carson City School District for the calculation error we suffered in 2017. And so that, again, has been signed into law, and we've been in communications with NDE about the timing of the receipt of those monies. So that was great news for us. SB 543 got, again, a lot of attention. This is the new funding model, and we'll talk about this in the future. The new funding model that replaces the current Nevada plan won't actually take effect until the 2021-23 biennium. And so as most of you know, that new funding model will be run concurrently or parallel to the existing Nevada plan so that school districts can see the impacts of that new funding model. It is a significant change to how school districts receive funds, going to a more student-centered funding model. And again, we'll have many discussions in the future about the changes to our funding as a result of that bill, but I think right now it's premature to talk about. SB 545 was our kind of first indication that things were changing in the legislature. This was legislation that redirected the excise reutil tax on marijuana that was previously sent, transmitted to the state's rainy day fund to instead go to supplement existing school funding in the distributive school account. And the hearing, it was very clear, the question was posed to the Joint Committees on Finance, whether they wanted to use those monies to supplement or add to existing school funding, or supplant or replace existing school funding. And the committees chose to supplement or add to school funding. And this was significant. This increased per pupil funding, an average of $120 per pupil this coming fiscal year and 124 in fiscal year 21. So again, that was our first sign that something was afoot and something significant was changing in Carson City. And that is a significant reason why we can balance the budget. SB 551 funded a number of items, including school safety improvements. This was the bill that extended the state's payroll tax. As most of you know, this is likely to be challenged in court, and so we'll keep monitoring that and apprise you of where that stands. And then SB 555 was the K-12 funding, education funding bill, and that set our per pupil amounts for the coming biennium, sets every school district's per pupil amounts, which of course do vary school by, school district by school district. We were funded to a total of $6,034 per pupil in fiscal year 20. That was a $110 per pupil increase. So incredibly significant. Basically, that built-in, that marijuana tax shift into those dollar amounts. So I'm sure school districts didn't get everything they wanted, but we got a significant amount of assistance from the state. It was a good session. We are incredibly grateful to the governor and legislative leadership for what they did, because it made, it made a huge difference. I will turn it over to Mike here to talk about some of the other funding sources that go into our budget.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, Presidents Simon Holland, Acting Superintendent McNeil, and members of the Board. Mike Schroeder, Budget Director, for the record. The last bill Mark talked about, SB 555, also includes a number of supplemental state programs. Most of those are listed here. I'll just make a note of the ones that had a major change. Obviously, special education funding went up about 7%. We've included an increase in our budget for that, the same for class size reduction. One of the ones we didn't list that was actually a pretty significant increase was Reed by Grade 3. It's gone from about $20 million statewide to over $31 million. And what that does is allow us to hire learning specialists for a number of schools, but not all of our schools. Hopefully, this will allow us to expand the number of schools that we have a learning specialist in. Down at the bottom, school safety. This is kind of located in several parts of what was approved. In SB 555, the social workers portion is there, and they're expanding that in the second year. But also in SB 555 is the resource officers, school police officers. There's 1.5 million statewide in the first year and 3 million in the second year of that. So hopefully, we'll be able to receive some of those funds also. And Mark talked about school safety that was in SB 551, like 8.3 million. So that's open to all districts. There's a portion in SB 555 that's only open to school districts under $100,000, 100,000 population in the county. So those are kind of the major ones, and we're hoping that to supplement our current funding with those. There's also SB 178, which was a major expansion of the funds there. This is basically, if you're not a Zoom school or a Victory school, and you have students in the 25th percentile of learning, lower quarter, then they provide $1,200 per student. So I think we had about 15 schools on that, and it'll be expanding to about 48. So there'll be a significant amount of funds there to help schools with that. And we're still in the process. We're just, we just got some revised guidance on that today in our grants department, and everybody are working real hard to determine how we can spend that.
I'm sorry to interrupt. That amount of money goes to non-Zoom and Victory schools?
Yes.
Right, okay. Okay, that's cool. Thank you.
So we want to give you a kind of an update. We've had a lot of meetings. We've done a lot of changes to the budget over the course of these meetings. So this is just like a refresher to say, where were we before we got to this point? At the top, you see the tentative budget. We had it approved with a, over a $17 million deficit. And originally, that was under $10 million. We had made some changes to reduce that amount after adding new schools. Offset that with some contra savings and some shifting of funds, like our debt service to the GST fund. But we wanted to meet what was proposed in the budget. So we added, we had to roll up and a 1% col in the budget at that point in time. So we added the full 3%, and that's what increased it by another $8.3 million. So we're over, close to an $18 million deficit at that point in time. Hoping that something's going to happen, good things will happen, and we can honor the commitment and balance the budget. Then after that, we had some smaller changes, technical, some restoration of some budget reductions, and some consideration of new positions to whittle it down a little bit. But then, when we did the final budget, we identified almost $10 million of additional cuts or shifts. And that's where a lot of things had to happen at the legislature in order to get that done. So we finished the final budget. We were sitting in almost an $8 million deficit. Now, we use this graphic all over the place. As we've talked about the budget, it used to be out of balance. Now you see, it's perfectly in balance. And that's what we're excited about. It's, it's that little graphic at the end, it's a miracle. To me, it really is. I've been doing this, I've been doing this a long time, and we haven't had a balanced budget in a heck of a long time. And Mark was looking back and trying to figure out, when exactly was it that we had one? And I thought it might be 2004. And that was, that was the last year that we actually filed a budget that was balanced. So it's been a long time coming. And the things that were happening, like SB 545, there was a Joint Finance Committee hearing that was on May 16. And as Mark brought up there, talking about the marijuana excise tax. And it was supposed to pay for the rainy, or the school safety improvements and millennial scholarship, but they moved it to say, "Do you want that in the DSA?" And I said, "Yeah." "Do you want to supplement the DSA instead of supplant?" They all said, "Yes." And I went from my office to Mark's and I said, "Are you watching this?" I mean, this is like, I hadn't seen anything like that forever. So it was just amazing. It was like a big Christmas present.
I do also want to acknowledge the hard work of staff over the past several years and the sacrifices that staff members have made. The district implemented priority-based budgeting, which, first school district in the country to do that, and made some really tough choices, had lots of citizen input into that. And I don't want to understate how important the legislative support has been, but I also want to acknowledge the great sacrifices that staff members and others have made to reduce almost $62 million out of this, out of our budget over the last three years to, to make sure that it, that it worked and that it balanced. So it's, it's been a great partnership with the legislature and the governor, and a lot of hard work by people in this district to bring it into balance as well. So thank you, guys, and all the team that has worked on it.
Well, thank you. And more legislative actions, like a week later, they had talked about savings in the statewide budget, and they earmarked more of that towards the DSA, towards per pupil funding. SB 551, Mark talked about, it was just basically 5.3 million to help supplement operations for school, for our school district specifically. And SB, AB 309, it was taking other categorical grants, and after analyzing that, this budget, we were able to use probably about 1.2 million of that, 2.7 million, to help with the general fund costs. The only thing that really didn't turn out, we were hoping that there would be some phase in of the DSA equity allocation model change. Because of those changes, we were anticipating losing per pupil funding, and that hit us a little bit in the final numbers. So when you see, you know, numbers go up by 120 statewide, we would have got about 116 of that state savings. We added about 44. So you're adding $160 per pupil, but this budget only goes up by 110 because of the DSA equity allocation change. But those are the things that happened that got us to this balanced point, and a lot of hard work by everybody in the governor and legislature, and Lindsay and all of you and all of our constituents. So we are really happy to be here. So exactly how did we do the last part, the 7.9 million? This is kind of a summary of some additional revenues that came about because of these changes. As we talked about, $110 of that was per pupil, AB 309. We already had $1 million worth in the budget. This added another 200,000. SB 551 was the 5.3 million. Really, all we're doing there is restoring that. If you look in the expenses, we're restoring the textbook waiver or shift of costs we had in the final budget. And then there's-
There will be a test later. I just want to make sure everybody's following all this. No, I'm just kidding.
Sure, I can be the test.
I bet you'd love to.
I'll be the teacher. So that's in summary how we ended up balancing the whole thing. And keep in mind, overall, there's still close to $11 million of reductions in this budget. It's not just, it wasn't painless. So between reductions and cost shifts, those are dollars going out of the general fund. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this point in time.
Any questions? Mr. Caudill.
I don't have a question, more of a statement. First, I just want to thank you and your staff for the work that you did to, to get us here. What, 15 years? That's a long time to not have a structurally balanced budget. And not only is it balanced, but we're able to do the 3% cola. And I know that, you know, we, you read stories about what's going on down south, about the issues they're having. And here we are up here by the sacrifice of staff, the work of staff, and the kindness of our legislators that we were able to get this done while balancing. And that's tremendous accomplishment for our district. And before you get too deep into the fiscal year 21 budget, you guys should be proud of the work that was done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trusty Caudill. Anyone else? Any questions before we go on? Or comments? Okay.
I can certainly give a comment and just, just, I'm glad you put up there, it's a miracle, because that's certainly what it feels like. That's certainly what it feels like. And when I was reviewing my packet, I couldn't believe it when it said balanced budget. I was like, what? I mean, I know things had gone well in Carson, but just not that well. I mean, not, you know, that well. So I'm just grateful. And hopefully, I know it because it's structural. We have to continue the work to keep it balanced. And so I'm hoping that we don't have to do more of that on the, you know, on the backs of our teachers and, and staff that have been so good in lining up and taking hits and so on like that. But I'd rather be here than not, that's for sure. And just look forward to the continued work to stay where we are without, you know, taking more from the staff that works so hard. But tremendous job, you and your team. I can't imagine what it must have felt like when you put all the numbers together and probably did it three, four, or five times to make sure. But we're so grateful. We're so grateful.
True that. I have a vision of you guys sort of jumping up and clicking your heels or something. Yes, yeah. Lots of high fives. Okay. Do you have more? Do you want to go through?
Sorry, this was a chart I actually liked putting together. It shows kind of, right? It's a visual of where we were at the beginning of the budget season, just for this fiscal year, and the roller coaster ride we were on. And ultimately, balancing, as you can see at the top right. So again, a lot of hard work. And as Mike said, there was $11 million in cost reductions to the general fund built into this budget. And so that's clearly not insignificant, shouldn't be minimized. But the combination of those reductions, along with the additional funding, helped us get to a balanced budget.
And what we're trying to do here is just show you a little bit more detail as to some of our costs. We provide kind of pretty high-level summaries in our schedules that are just based on functions and programs, major functions and programs. This takes those programs and functions and says how much salary and benefits versus operating, non-personnel costs, kind of breaks it out for each of those. So it's just to give you a little more insight into that. And at the back of our Department of Taxation forms, the last two pages, it kind of, it will take these functional summaries and break them down by object codes. So teacher line item and instruction, textbooks, things like that. So I'll give you even more detail on what's in the budget.
So Mike, what does the ending fund balance of $36,200,000- So Mike, what does the ending fund balance of $36,280,47 give us as an ending fund balance percentage?
We're gonna get to that.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, jumping ahead.
We could do it now if you want.
Yeah, let's keep them in suspense.
Good question. We have some more thunder to give you first.
That's okay. You can answer later. That's fine.
And also, what we did include is a, kind of a further detail, taking the costs and breaking them down by major divisions or chief leadership team officers, things like that. That's what this does to kind of give you an idea of overall where the dollars are, how many FTEs, salary benefits, the other major expenditure categories. And this is a high-level summary of that. Close totals up to our general fund. Total expenses is $488 million. And in the attachment D, each of these divisions will have further breakdowns, so. And it breaks down departments within these divisions and things like that, and will give you even a better idea of where, where the money is going. And we will also prepare an annual budget document that provides a really great amount of detail into our budget, too.
So I did, I did want to just kind of take a step back and again, give, give you highlights for this budget, since we do have actually highlights for this year's budget versus lowlights. Again, so as we've talked before, this is our first balanced budget since fiscal year '04, a long time. We do fund a 3% cost of living adjustment for the biennium for all employees, and it also provides for salary step increases, merit increases, rollups, whatever you want to call them, for employees.
Can, can we just go back one second? Because the, the district does have to submit a balanced budget every year per state law. So, so we want to clarify for folks that we have, we have always presented a balanced budget, but we did so by basically carving out from reserves. And those reserves were getting smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. And that's, that's where our concern about a structural deficit occurred, because every year, we would have more expenditures than revenues, and so we'd have to go back into our fund balances and take more and more out. So I do want to let folks know, we have had balanced budgets every year by using our savings, frankly. And as we all know, we can't do that at home indefinitely either, and we certainly can't do it here, so I did want to clarify.
Yep.
Yep. We are now, for the first time, structurally balanced, where ongoing revenues cover ongoing costs completely. So that's right. So we will not have to pull from reserves to cover our expenses in this budget. In addition to funding those salary increases for employees, we did not have to increase class sizes. And so again, this was very important to a number of folks in Carson City and obviously here as well. We didn't want to have to do that, and we didn't do that. So that was great. We, at our community forums and in our budget survey, way back in December and January, we did contemplate potential reductions in a number of really critical areas, and we all acknowledged that was, you know, nothing any of us wanted to do. Those were very severe cuts that really kind of gutted important functions in the school district. And so I'm happy to report that it turned out, we did not have to make any reductions in those areas. And, and so that's, that's wonderful, obviously. Importantly, too, our special education fund budget has been increased 6.5%. So that means more resources for those children who need it most.
And the district puts in significantly more into the special education fund than the state does and has for some time.
Absolutely, we do. It turned out, we do not require a waiver of our minimum expenditure requirement for textbooks, as we talked about. Again, it's great to have that in law. We thought we may need it. We, it turned out, we didn't. And so we have budgeted for the 5.2 million in capital costs for textbooks and instructional hardware out of the general fund, which is kind of a reversal of what we had in the final budget. So happy to report that. That's the way we would prefer to budget for those costs. We are also increasing funding and providing for a third child find team and an additional compliance position to help kind of, again, strengthen our efforts for special education.
And can we explain to folks what child find teams do?
Yes. So I will, I will look to the superintendent here, but, but basically, it is a interdisciplinary team that evaluates children under the age of five who may have special needs, does that assessment so that we can be prepared when they enroll in school. But I will turn over Dr. McNeil.
I'm very impressed, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Mark Mathers. That's awesome. That's basically what I was going to say, but by federal law, we have to go out and we have to assess students that come into our district between those ages. And we are falling behind on that. We have a state corrective action on that, and so we've put into place parameters in order to fix that.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Next, we knew we had, we have three new schools opening this coming school year, which is great. I hear that enrollment at those schools is booming, and we cover the operating costs of those three new schools in this budget. And so, remember, that was about 3.4 million? We've got it covered. And then lastly, the capital funds budget in this budget continues to fund major new school construction that you can see there, a new high school in Wild Creek, a new elementary school in Cold Springs, an expansion of Swope Middle School, along with $40 million of capital renewal projects. Just a significant effort on our capital, for, from our capital projects team. And again, based on voters' approval of the WC-1 sales tax in November 2016, we can do that. So the budget accomplishes that as well. So lots of accomplishments here in this budget.
And those $40 million in capital renewal projects are for our older schools. We've had a lot of concerns, folks have voiced, that we need to make sure that we, that we provide equity of opportunity for kids to have a great environment, no matter where they live. And so we're spending $40 million a year of those WC-1 sales tax monies to renovate and renew our older schools.
Yep. So now, here is the summary of sources and uses for our budget. In our budget, we have estimated we will end fiscal year '19 with a little over $36 million total fund balance, but of that, about 1.2 million is inventory. So we have estimated that we will end the fiscal year with $35 million of unrestricted fund balance. We actually think we'll do a little bit better than that. I will come back to you and report on how we actually did in fiscal year '19, but state budget law kind of incentivizes you to be conservative, so we have been. And so we continue to estimate a $35 million fund balance, which, based on estimated expenditures for fiscal year '19, is 7.5% fund balance. For fiscal year '20, then, with this amended budget, again, costs equal revenues, so we will, we are budgeted to stay at that $35 million of unrestricted or available fund balance. But again, I expect we will do better than that, and I will come back to you as soon as we have a good, solid number there. Based on budget expenses, that represents 7.2% fund balance, which is, which is good. It's a little bit below our target, but again, based on where fiscal year '19 comes in, we may actually hit our target fund balance. But for the moment, that's what we budgeted, and again, that's better than many agencies in this area.
And to give folks context, so 8% would be about one month's expenditures. So it's great, and it's better than it's been to have that 7.5% or 7.2% fund balance, but it doesn't even represent fully a month's expenditures of the district. So we're, we're still cautious, and we're still being very, very methodical in making sure that we stay on track for that fund balance.
Yes. We will definitely continue to have to be frugal and spend wisely and monitor our budgets very tightly for the foreseeable future.
So now that the confetti has sort of hit the ground, we kind of want to look ahead. The good thing about the legislature meeting is they kind of set our funding for the next two years. I mean, the categorical stuff, we're still working out details there, but our per pupil numbers, we already know what that is, and we can look at that and kind of look forward and say, where, where the heck would we be in fiscal year '21? So when we, we look forward, we mentioned the per pupil funding only goes up $50 per pupil, our portion, and that's less than 1%. Our rollups are like around 2%. And we have new schools opening. We will have other increases in revenue for ad verum and GST and government services tax and things like that. But when you look at that, it's not a big increase, and when you look at the expenditure side of the House, we've got some pretty big increases there. So it looks like, even though we're structurally balanced now, probably heading into fiscal year '21, we're gonna have some more work to do. But that will be part of our update to you later this year.
And when will we begin that process?
That's a great segue. We pegged early fall, it may be late summer. I would look for any input you have on the timing of that. But we wanted, as we talked about at the last meeting, we do want to get started earlier in the budget process, so you can see kind of the bullet points of what we want to cover with you. But certainly, the last sub-bullet point there, we want to talk about the process and a framework for working through the fiscal year '21 budget. We want a really candid discussion and input from you about what worked for you and what didn't work, and what you would like to see and didn't see, and so forth. So we really want that open discussion from you about how do you want us to proceed with the fiscal year '21 budget? That's really going to be important, I think. We talked about priority-based budgeting in January, but, but I want to revisit kind of, again, the analysis that we do for you to see if it meets your needs. So we will, again, you know, tentatively, we were targeting either late August or September to begin those discussions.
And did you get any lessons from the priority-based budgeting process that you would, things you would change going forward?
Yeah, we, we did. I mean, we, one of the good things I thought we did was use the steering committee, and I think we should utilize them earlier in the process. It was kind of a thought that came to us midway through. But it was a group of teachers and, and other folks that I think we want to do. Certainly, I think every department who went through it learned a lot by the end of the process. So it's kind of the first time you do anything, it's kind of unclear as you're going through it, how does this all come together? And, and so there were some departments, for instance, that went too far down in the weeds in terms of identifying programs. There were some departments that were too macro in kind of identifying programs. So there's a lot that we can do, I think, to do a better job of identifying specific programs. There's probably a lot we can do in terms of scoring. The biggest thing, I think, that we recognized when, when we were going through this budget process, we didn't have a lot of time. So we really kind of rushed the analysis, and I think you guys probably sensed that when we came to you with recommendations. It was, we just completed priority-based budgeting in November, December, and then we hit budget, and it was kind of like, departments here, give us, give us your ideas. And what, what we want to do is a more orderly dialogue with departments to talk about their programs and how to do those things, how to do those programs more effectively and efficiently. We just didn't have a lot of time to have an interactive kind of dialogue with them as opposed to just giving them budget instructions and getting paperwork back.
Right, yeah.
So that's, that's probably the biggest change that, that we would like to do.
Good, good. And I, I know there were some results that were counterintuitive, and for example, the, the, you know, tire replacement program that came out at the bottom of the list, those are things that we can tweak about what the criteria are, the lens through which we're looking at all these things, the filters. And so I think there are some great lessons to be learned from all that. And I certainly know, if any board members had observations from that process, you know, over the last year, we should share them. And I know you'll, you'll set it up for us to be able to do that. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. And again, thanks to you both. I just do have some comments. I think it's, the process went well, and we continue to have great participation in the community forums when we talk about budgets. And I see you still have that as a part of that. I just want to comment, I appreciate the work on that. I think our community does, too, and we want to continue to do that. And we learn from that and make decisions based upon that, so it's very helpful.
And I agree, I think it's a really great part of the process. I have started talking with Samantha about, right, what can we do a little differently? Because I think we're starting to see diminishing returns a little bit from kind of the similar approach we had in year two of those community forums. So we've started the discussion of what, maybe, how could we change it? Now that the budget's kind of changing a little bit and where we're at, the discussion might be a little bit different now.
That's true.
So we're beginning those discussions again, trying to get way out ahead of, of actually the, you know, the survey going out in December.
Good, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I would concur. It did feel rushed, but also for myself, Trustee Calvert, Trustee Minneto, our heads were spinning because we got sworn in January, and here we are. So it will be good for us to see the whole process as you, as we start in the fall. But starting, never hurts to start early, because we have more time to really, really have thorough discussions and not feel like we got to make a decision to move on, because we're coming up against it.
And we also have the benefit of knowing what our revenues will be fairly, with fairly great certainty, which we did not have this year because of the legislative session. So it will be a much more thoughtful and much more methodical process this way.
So there are a couple changes to other funds as part of this amended budget. Capital projects, we're really just changing the government services tax fund, a few tweaks there. Special education fund, we're adding the child find team. We thought we would pay for that in fiscal year '20 with grant funds. We used those in fiscal year '19 instead, and we said that would be an ongoing cost, so now we have to add that in. So that's what's happening there. And on the special revenue side, where we thought we were going to get those child find funds, we take that out. So it's just kind of a swapping. And then, internal service fund, as part of balancing the budget, we felt we would save on health insurance-related costs, and we reduced our health insurance in the general fund by about 1.3 million as part of this amended final budget. That has to be reflected over in the internal service fund for our health insurance fund there. And I don't, we attached all the schedules and stuff, I don't, unless you have a specific question about one, we don't have to go through each of those.
I do want to note, though, on the capital projects fund, when we, when we add together the general fund and all of the other funds that we're looking at, we are in excess of a billion-dollar enterprise. And, yeah, that's a pretty, pretty intimidating number. But, but much of that, almost half, is related to our, our capital projects, and we're so grateful for that ability to build new schools and refurbish the old ones.
So again, kind of wrapping it up, we did have two requests of board members that we had not addressed as part of the budget process yet, so we can cover them real quickly if, if you'd like.
Before we go on to that, just want to have an opportunity for you all to explain for the public record, the nutrition services fund and the $4.3 million deficit that it shows. Just what do people need to know about that?
Basically, it's not real. Unfortunately, for proprietary funds, which are for business operations, we have to report the long-term pension and other post-employment benefit costs.
Like the post office, huh?
Yes. And so that creates a negative net position. We're not unique in that regard. Probably every enterprise fund of a local government, because it has to reflect the present value of those long-term liabilities on its balance sheet, is now showing a negative net position in terms of our cash in that fund, which is really kind of the acid test of how a fund is doing. We are in very good shape. We meet monthly fiscal and nutrition services. We are seeing, you know, a very good year in terms of increasing our net position. We negotiated a higher guarantee from Aramark for the next fiscal year, so we are in a positive cash position, and this is just an accounting requirement.
And as an enterprise fund, that fund has to pay for itself, so it is not supported by the general fund. It is, it is off and separate, and, and that funds our nutrition services through a contract and does not affect the general fund. and does not affect the general fund.
That's absolutely right. So in terms of special requests, the first one we were asked to look at a while ago, actually, were our review of vacancies of positions that had been vacant for more than six months. This is a little difficult for us to do, given how many positions we have and the fact we do not actually use unique position numbers for every position. But we did perform an analysis, which has shown, I know this is small, on this chart, there were a total of 77 positions that had been vacant for more than six months. And you can see this, savings are significant for that six-month period, a little over $2 million. Probably what I would want to say to you, though, is that many of those positions that had been vacant, like bus drivers, teachers, and counselors, and aides-in-assistance are obviously critical to education. And, you know, they were vacant for more than six months, but that wasn't what we wanted to have happen, right? So, you know, there aren't that many categories of employees that are, I think, more discretionary in terms of what we would keep vacant. But it's something to keep in mind for fiscal year 21 or as we go forward in fiscal year 20 and beyond. It is something, you know, that our financial review committee does look at every week. We look at vacancies and whether we can hold them and whether we truly need to fill them or if we can make do. So it is something we do, but here are the numbers that come out of that analysis.
And it's good to do the analysis.
Yes.
It's good to take a look at if, if a specific position has been vacant for six months, is it something we can live without? And we looked at these and said, not really.
Right. But we have a vacant position right now in training services, and we're holding it vacant because we're making do. So there would be an example of kind of what we do at Financial Review Committee.
Okay.
And then, and then the second question that we hadn't answered was about travel and training. You know, in fiscal, in the fiscal year 19 budget, we basically halved the travel and training budget. But one important kind of distinction here about travel and training, it, we kind of have to break it out. And so we broke it out on the next page between training for school-based staff, right, which is important, training for central staff and the board, which is important, but probably less so than the school-based staff. And then we also have professional development dollars that are an item that we are required to fund per our collective bargaining agreements. And so every pro-tech employee, leadership team employee, has a certain amount of training budgeted per those collective bargaining agreements that has to be budgeted. So those really aren't an item we can touch. And so here, here is the breakout of dollars between travel versus training. So training might be the conference registration versus the travel being the airfare. And here's how it breaks out. It is a little under $500,000, or actually, it's 500, a little over $500,000. But you can see how it breaks out between central services, travel and training, versus travel and training dollars in school operating budgets versus that guaranteed professional development dollars that every employee in those bargaining units is guaranteed to have. So again, we wanted to share the analysis with you. Again, it's something we can look at for the fiscal year 21 budget, if you like. But I, again, wanted to share the information with you to close the loop.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Cottle?
Yeah, thank you. There's another clarifying question. The police overtime, I know it was taken out, then it was put back in, it's in.
It is in.
Okay. Thank you.
We restored that, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, well, again, thank you for bringing us a structurally balanced budget, and thank you to everyone who made that happen because it was definitely a team effort. And specifically, the legislature and the governor for demonstrating great, great vision and strength and courage in moving forward to increased funding to education, and we're extremely grateful. We're not out of the woods yet, and at $6,000-something dollars per pupil, $6,034, we are still far below the amount that was calculated to be necessary for a student in Nevada to be educated, which was about $9,283. And we're still less than half of the national average for per pupil funding, but we've made huge progress and the district has made great progress in using the dollars wisely. So we're extremely grateful for this and really proud of it. Does anyone have any other questions? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, we have a public comment. Thank you, JJ, sorry.
Natha Anderson?
Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland and trustees. My name is Natha Anderson. It's my honor and pleasure to be the president of the Washoe Education Association. I actually had some other remarks, and then I thought, there's no way, this is such great news. Thank you, gentlemen, for everything you've done. And then also Lindsay Anderson from Washoe County School District. It was great working, well, most of the time it was great working with her in the legislature. Those 1:00 AM meetings, not always, but it was just, it's wonderful news. And I think one reason why I'm up here is, most importantly, as a representative of the teachers and counselors, I'm so happy to hear that our class sizes will not be going up. Our special ed programs, our teacher librarian programs, and so many other very important elements that are part of, not only our bargaining unit, but more importantly, our students' learning environment will not be impacted. It's, it's just great news, and it's greatly appreciated, the amount of work that went into getting this to become a reality. I also wanted to just mention how much I appreciate the comments made by Mr. Mathers when it comes to the priority-based budgeting, especially in regards to the steering committee. We had voiced some concerns earlier, and so hopefully, when this starts, we'll have a few more representatives from those different bargaining units also part of it. But just, if I'm going to stand up here and stomp my feet when I'm upset about something, then I also better stand up here and say thank you when something goes well. So thank you very much and look forward to working to make sure that our students in all zip codes receive the best education possible. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your work at the legislature as well, and all of your members.
Margaret Martini?
Ms. Martini, welcome back.
Thank you. Everyone knows budgets are subjective. What is interesting to note is that $11 million in budget cuts were perfected as stated. And there are millions of dollars in increased taxes from the legislature in this budget that are going to this district. What are the accolades for? This seems to be a huge increase of funds needed to run this district. These stats shriek of mismanagement of funds by millions and millions of dollars extracted from the taxpayers. Capital projects are accomplished more by more taxes, not because of prudent financial management. With all the new funds, I would expect that Nevada will escalate from the bottom to at least the middle of a national school status. Oh, PS, with the escalated building, there will be a huge increase in property tax revenues. I did not hear an amount of actual funds that are going into the school district. And if you cut $11 million, wasn't that waste that should have been accounted for previously or cut previously? That's a lot of money. So don't pat yourselves on the back too hard or too long.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martini. And just again, as we've mentioned previously, last year, this district was named in the top 18% of school districts nationally for student achievement and student performance. So I know we're doing a lot of really hard work with less than half of the resources that other school districts have on average in the country, so.
Elise Weatherly?
Ms. Weatherly?
Thank you. I know that you guys got money from the taxes from marijuana, right? Does anyone besides me think that that is a moral and logic conflict? Why would we take money? Why would we be so happy about tax money from something that we don't want the kids to take? But we have now approved and condoned that marijuana, recreational marijuana, is good. It's a good thing for you kids, you know? Sex education, it's a good thing for you kids. Well, if I were in charge of the budget, which I am at my house, I would look over and I would say, well, do I have money for sex education so I can teach them how to have anal sex safely? Or tires? I'd say, well, we're going to go ahead and get the tires, all right? What I would suggest is, why don't we take, get rid of the immoral programs that we've got? You also said that you have a way of testing success. So what I wanted to find out is, from a budget standpoint, how do you determine if somebody is actually successful or not? If you have lowered the bar so much to make sure all the kids are graduating, because TMCC, do you know what that was, what they were looking for? Was a high graduation rate. They would not take a risk on anybody that might not graduate because it would make them look bad. So I would say, is that really a good way to test success of a budget or not, is just by a high graduation rate? You're spending programs, money on programs that are not necessary? And I would ask that we stop. The other thing, too, this 15-year-old, he's so funny, he sees the new school being built by us, that Pete Etchar, I guess he approved of that, I disapproved of it. He's going, what are they doing this for out here? Why didn't they take that money and put it into Sparks Middle School? And I went, I don't know. Because Sparks Middle School has an amazing school. They have an amazing principal. But now we have a new school up there, and it's more money and stuff, and of course, we're out of it. I don't know how, I cannot tell somebody what's right and what's wrong to do with money, with a budget. But all I'm saying is, let's take a look at what the kids are being taught. And if we spend money on English as a second language, why? This is our country. This is our country. We should be able to communicate in this country and not have to spend money so that we can catch up with each other. In the meantime, now, still, the budget's going, you know, towards, towards people that need extra help. Also, you said there's an attached list of programs and projects. Is that something that, that I can get ahold of to see exactly the detail of where the money's going?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's posted on our website.
Okay, thank you. I'll check there. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
That's all at this time.
Okay. Trustee Taylor?
I'm just ready to make a motion.
You go right ahead.
All right. I move, Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approves the balanced fiscal year budget for 2019, 20 amended, approve the balanced fiscal year 2019, 20 amended final budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Raymond. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I thank you guys and appreciate, again, all the work. We're very, very pleased. I'm thinking that it might be good for trustees to take a break before we go into the capital items. Would you like to do that? So we'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll be back, actually 16 minutes, and we'll, we'll be back at 3:40. Whatever number of minutes that is on your watch, we'll be back at 3:40. Impossible action to approve the Washoe County School District Capital Improvement Program forwarded to the Board of Trustees by the Capital Funding Protection Committee to include the 2018-19D major projects program and fiscal year 2020 capital renewal program in the amount of $38 million to include projects throughout the school district pursuant to the attached list of programs, program projects, and associated cost for each project. Mr. Pete Etchar and Ms. Tammy Zimmerman, welcome. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Simon Holland. So Pete Etchar, Chief Operating Officer, joined by Tammy Zimmerman, our Deputy Capital Projects and Facility Management Officer. So we are indeed here as part of the capital expenditure process, which is definitely focused on public transparency and accountability. So typically, on the first Thursday of every even-numbered month, we have a Capital Funding Protection Committee meeting, where staff presents all of the capital funding recommendations to the 11-member public committee. We then bring those Capital Funding Protection Committee recommendations to you, typically at the next board meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Tammy Zimmerman to kind of walk you through the presentation.
Thank you, Pete. We'll start off with Swope Core School Investments as part of this capital improvement plan. In the fall of 2018, we received funding allocation to investigate the core school investments at Swope. With that, we hired TSK Architects to look at a facilities assessment. The assessment should be in your packet, it's a full report, but it comes up with a facility assessment of 76%, which means that it's satisfactory in the building and site for the intended use of that, that site. We would like to expand it to bring up the sixth graders, because our model for middle school is sixth, seventh, and eighth, as well as bring in some of our EdSpec items that we've approved through the EdSpec process with the board and the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Education specifications?
Educational specifications, thank you. As well as any capital renewal that needs to be done in conglomeration with the expansion of the school, and it makes sense to do at that time. So with that, TSK basically told us that it was good to move forward and to expand that facility. So then we hired Architects Plus, and we worked with Greg Ernie and Paul Walsh. They've done many projects over at Swope, so they were our natural fit for that, and came up with some options through that process that are in your packet. This is TSK's report, but these are the options that they came up with that worked with the facility, the existing facility. We worked with the existing administration over there to look at what it meant to them, what they needed, what they thought they needed to bring up those middle schoolers. It has a gym expansion in those plans. Some of them are very, the two slides are very different. The gym is on the back portion in this one, and the sixth and seventh grade is kind of where the gym is currently now, as well as expanding the multipurpose room and working on the administration area to make it more cohesive for that administration. This one has expanding just the gym portion onto the back, adding onto that gym, and then behind that, that's the sixth and seventh grade, as well as the multipurpose room and the administration areas. And we think that these two options give us a great springboard to start the actual design process with Architects Plus, and that in the future slides you'll see is a request for some design money for that. Do you guys have any questions about the process?
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks. I think it's exciting to, to look at the core schools and the investment that's being made in them as new schools are, are being built, because we don't want people at, at core schools, we feel like they're getting less, you know, of an experience and having less, less, you know, aesthetically and conducively and all of those things. So this is exciting for me. My question is this, is there any way at all that this would give us, and I know Swope is laid out a little differently, but I'm thinking about single-point-of-entry from a security standpoint? Is there anything that we can do while this is happening to, again, I know they're spread out, so I don't know how that can happen? Anything we can do in that vein, at least get them closer from a safety standpoint?
They currently have a single-point-of-entry that was, was done when we did all the middle schools.
Okay, so they were done as well.
So they're up to date with the single-point.
Okay, fantastic. I thought they weren't. Fantastic, thank you. Oh, they have the fencing.
They have all the fencing and the, and the door that you have to buzz into to get into the next area.
Yeah, I knew about that. They have the fencing, I forgot. Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question. So I'm, I'm looking at the, the little lines that come off the green, and I assume that means that's a second floor on top of that particular area. So is this all going to happen while students are going to school at Swope? What's the, what's the phasing of how that works?
Well, the beauty with this one is we're, we're having a C-Mar contractor, United Construction, help us with that and the phasing plans. It is a two-story for that education wing, because we are landlocked with the baseball diamond over there that is very historical and no one wants to touch because they've done a lot of renovation on it, and to still provide enough playground space for those students to come out at lunch and before school. So it is a two-story. We'll work through that phasing process with the C-Mar contractor and the site administration to make sure staff and safety, or staff and students are safe and that we're thoughtful in how we do that, and we have agreement with them to do that work.
And, and what's our timeline for when we think this might begin, assuming that you get the go-ahead?
We'd like to start construction in 2020 and be done by August of 2021. But that will take, we'll have to take into account some of the C-Mar contractors' ideas and those, and, and work with the site administration and staff to make sure that everything aligns and that it's a safe place to be.
Okay. And certainly availability of labor and subcontractors would be a big issue. Okay. Other, yes, Vice President Raymond?
So for either design or whatever the possible design might be, I see mention of an expansion to the cafeteria area, I guess. My understanding is that current cafeteria size as it is now hardly accommodates the number of students that are currently in the building, and it just doesn't seem like the expansion is making that space that much bigger. So I just, I know that's kind of getting ahead of things, that there'll be more conversation about that, but I just know that's a concern of the principal and staff that I've talked to there, that the, the space is already so tight. So I... So I'm just throwing that out there.
And there, we do know that that's a pretty tight space, but there are hub spaces that will be provided within this that we could allow students to eat within those and other areas. Like they get to do in our, in the plans that we're proposing for our new high schools and middle schools. They get to eat in those areas and we're able to clean them and provide furniture in those spaces. So we'd like to provide that same option and opportunities for those students.
And the other thing we hear a lot about, I think, with this design, I know I've heard it for Vaughan and Swope, but just that the hallways are so narrow and during passing, especially with the backpacks. And I think I heard at Swope, they don't let you wear backpacks anymore specifically because of that, that you have to carry your books and hold little binders. So is there any thought about addressing the hallway spacing in this design process?
As we do that in our middle schools, we've gone down and shrunk the locker sizes. So we could shrink those. We could not have lockers in there and take those spaces out because if we're going digital and one-to-one, maybe we don't need those locker spaces and those backpacks. All your textbooks could be on your device and that could help with that spacing of it. But those hallways are pretty comparable to the new school hallway size as well. So I don't know that they're that much smaller.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the flow is difficult, too, where everybody has to cross. Very tough. Okay. Anything else on the Swope options? Are you looking for input from the board on a preference for either option?
Not at this time. In the next couple of slides, you'll just see some, a request for some design funding. And we'll be bringing these options back to you guys so you guys know how we've progressed through the design process. But just kind of bringing you up to speed where we're at and that we'll be asking for more money later on.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tammy.
So we'll move on to the capital renewal plan as part of this capital improvement plan. The capital renewal plan, you are familiar with seeing that every year. We're bringing you a capital renewal FY 2020 plan in June. We're looking to align this with the district's fiscal year for budgeting and accounting efficiencies. And it just makes sense that we all roll all our budgets yearly, starting in July. We also generally bring you an evaluation report in December when we do this. We've only had six months of that. So we'll bring you that evaluation back in December of 2019 to show you where we spent the money and what projects are completed. But as a snapshot, since January 1st of 2019, we have awarded $13.5 million in capital renewal projects.
That's great.
And $117 million in major projects, just since January. So we're hopping. And you'll get to see on the school district's communication webpage, their Facebook will be going out to projects this summer. I know some of the board members and our staff will be out there with Riley Sutton. And you'll get to see some of those being completed and getting ready for the first part of school in August.
That's great.
You can also keep track of us on the Data Gallery, which is on the website, the communications website, which tells you what we've awarded, what project it is. And that's kind of our transparency for everybody to see. You can always ask. We're happy to update you guys for that.
That's great. Tammy, can you comment just briefly on what the process is by which you make decisions for what gets renewed when?
So we work through a facilities condition index system, which is a rating system that is performed by yearly inspections of our inspectors in our environmental safety and assessment department. So they go through all of the building systems and rate them and work with our maintenance staff and our technicians because they're the boots on the ground that know what it really is. And they've been working on it or trying to fix it and they can't find parts. And they transfer that information to our ESNA department. And it comes out in the facility condition index system. And all of those building systems are prioritized and rated. And then I sit down with each of those guys from the shop, spend about a week with them and go through. There's a laundry list of items that are three in the system, which means they need to be planned and repaired. And we prioritize those with the shop. And these are what you'll see. These are the worst of the worst based off of that system and the maintenance tech's input.
That's great.
So we spend a lot of time prioritizing and making sure that we're doing what needs to be done first.
Great. Okay.
You'll also see a line item on there for energy conservation. That is the third and final phase of our energy conservation through the district with McKinstry. It's for $12.1 million. That's replacing LED lights, toilet flush valves, irrigation controls, and also our thermostats in our buildings and trying to make those efficient and recoup that energy into our general fund.
Okay. Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Tammy, what kind of, you mentioned communication things that we do to let people know that these kind of projects are happening. You mentioned Data Gallery and Facebook. What kind of communications do we do at each school so that the teachers and the counselors at the school sites know what's happening? I mean, I've heard, I've talked to a number of teachers that have said they wish they knew when, what kind of work was going to be done at their schools. And I've heard from other teachers that know about the work. So I'm just kind of wondering, what kind of plan do you have to reach out to each school and to their staff? If there's anything that we can do to maybe beef that up a little bit, since this is a lot of good work. And I know our teachers and our counselors and librarians would like to know about it ahead of time.
We do go out as we start projects. Our project managers go out and speak with the staff and let them know it's coming, as well as our planning managers. So that starts with the principal and then trickles down into those staff. If it's a direct impact on that staff, they'll see us in their room talking about packing up and boxes and those kind of things. But the Data Gallery is one place that I know a lot of them find it and then email me and say, "I see this is on the list. When is that going to happen?" And we're happy to answer those questions. The custodians can get in there, as well as the principals, but we really try, once they're approved on this list, to go out and communicate to the administration about that. And that should move then down to the staff.
Okay. Other questions or comments there? And I see, I see McQueen is only getting turf in the next year. I know McQueen has been on your radar. What's the update on that?
We're still working through that feasibility study with that, with the new high school. We're not sure how that's going to play out. And so we're still working through that feasibility portion. They are getting an ADA upgrade into their restrooms right now, as well as new flooring in their multipurpose room. So they are getting some. And then we'll replace the turf up there because that's over 10 years old up there, so.
$1.75 million.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a big deal.
It's a big investment in all of our facilities. And we're very grateful for WC1 and the money that it provides.
Great. Okay. Any questions on the capital renewal program? Okay, let's keep moving.
I think it's the last slide for Pete.
All right. So this last slide is hopefully something you're becoming kind of familiar with. Now, it's a format we've been using to track the allocation since November 2016. On the left is the list of projects that we had through WC1 that was actually put on the ballot. In the middle column is the allocation that we're looking for today and that includes the two that Tammy just talked about, the $37 million for the school repairs capital renewal program and the $1 million for design C-MAR for the Swope Middle School expansion. And then on the right is kind of a running tally of all the allocations that we've done since November 2016. So as you can see, since starting, and again, we're so thankful for WC1, but since starting this program and a little, you know, since November 2016, we're over half a billion dollars in allocations to our district and these much-needed projects. The one addition I'll say that we have on this kind of format list that's new is under Core School Investments. We're going to start kind of breaking that out. It used to just say Core School, we put everything there. But as we start doing these critical projects at our existing schools, we're going to start actually showing them individually. So you'll see under this, the Swope Middle School expansion, the $1 million there. And you can see that's a total of $4 million now that we will have in Swope. So as these other schools come, we'll just keep adding to the list.
Pete, on the totals on the right-hand side, are those where the check marks exist? Is that the actual amount that has been spent on that or has been allocated, or was that the budgeted?
Great question. These are allocations. And I'm not trying to be an accountant here and running, you know, a tally of, okay, this is how much we spent and going back and trying to rectify it. This is actually what was being, what was allocated by the Capital Funding Protection Committee recommendation to you and then finally awarded by you. So it's not a true reflection of how much work has been done. It's more allocations. The check mark means that it's totally funded. Means that we're not looking for any additional funding going forward on that individual project. Now, as Tammy indicated, we do an end-of-the-year kind of like summary report of all the projects and every dime that's spent on any of our projects that comes to the Capital Funding Protection Committee and then to you as our annual evaluation report. That's really where you can get into the pennies on every project. This is just strictly allocations.
Just from my perspective, it would be great if in the future we could expand this to an eight-and-a-half by 14 and have another column that gives us an ongoing, where are we with that project? You know, I, we've seen this and I don't want to change this because this has been the budget and the allocation for each of those projects. But it would be great to see, okay, so we planned to spend $12.93 million on the Damani Ranch High School addition and it's finished. And we actually spent $12.92 or whatever. Just a suggestion that would make it a little bit more informative for us in terms of context. Okay. All right. Mr. Caudill?
Thank you. Where are we with O'Brien Middle School?
So with O'Brien, we're currently, just like with McQueen, we're working through the feasibility study and looking at options with that. We've been working with TSK and those options out there to either expand that and other options. But we're still working through those feasibilities. We were further along with Swope and so that's where we're at at this point.
Okay. Do you have an estimate on how that's going to move along? Because I hear it all the time from my constituents in North Valleys. Because North Valleys is such a growing area. It's probably one of the last parts of our county that's growing very fast, that has not seen any improvements or new schools. And so they're now starting to become very impatient. And so I've told them, look out for potential expansion with O'Brien, which will help the elementary schools because the sixth graders then can move in to the middle school fully. So can you help me out so I can start passing that information along to the community?
Like I said, we're still working through those options that they've given to us. I would say probably in the next six months, we would be able to come back to you with information. But we are actively designing Cold Springs Elementary School out there. And that will go out for bidding in, before the holidays. So they will be getting a new elementary school out in that area to help.
Yeah, that's great. And I can, I pass that along. North Valleys people generally don't consider Cold Springs part of North Valleys because that will impact Cold Springs Middle, Gomes and Silver Lake, but it will not impact Lemon Valleystead, Alice Smith, and Alice Smith's still in school right now. So that would be great information about O'Brien to pass it along to that community. So thank you.
Okay, any others? Okay. So if there are no other questions, is there anything else you wanted to add before we consider a motion? Oh, public comment. Thank you, JJ.
Elise Weatherly?
Ms. Weatherly?
Hi, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. First of all, I want to say, Tammy, thank you for your high-tech approach to things. I like the fact that we're talking about maybe doing away with books and, you know, smart things. That's very futuristic and I appreciate that a lot. What I will tell you is that I will be writing a book, too. And it's going to be not entitled exactly, but Pay Attention. It's an accounting thing. Transparency. Pete Etchart and I used to work together when Center Street Mission went to Faith House Ministries. I was in charge of the money. I was in charge of accounting. I was in charge of bookkeeping. Here we are, a man who says he's not an accountant and yet we're doing budget things. All right, I liked your comment, Katie, about checking the expenses. What happened with Faith House Ministries is that I would get expenses and costs and there wouldn't be any backup to what these expenses were for. There'd be no receipt. There would be no reason. We just let it go through. We did not have a good ROI. We kept losing money. I could not get people to listen to me that there are some things in here that need to be checked off. You don't spend money that you don't have, right? We're not that kind of a risky thing. So I would say that please, spend wisely. Monitor the transactions. Make sure that there is a spreadsheet there that shows you exactly what went where. Because the unfortunate thing is that some people trust everybody else and let them get away with stuff and they happen to be putting money in their pockets. And that's the unfortunate thing about this world. With our budgets, that happens. The other thing, just on a side note, you guys talked about playgrounds. To me, playgrounds were harassed grounds. If we didn't have no playgrounds, I think we would have really good schools. That's just me. You've got some kids there that don't like to go out and play because they get bullied and they get picked on. And those are usually the smart kids. And so I would watch out for them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. I do want to assure you that we do have all of our expenditures audited and they are presented publicly on our website. And we have external auditors that review all of those expenditures. So we do take great care to make sure that all of our expenditures are appropriate. Okay. Any other public comment, JJ?
That's all for this item.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion? Vice President Raymond?
I will make the motion. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the Capital Funding Protection Committee and approves the Washoe County School District Capital Improvement Program to include the 2018-2019D Major Projects Program in the amount of $38 million to include projects to include projects throughout the district pursuant to the attached list of program projects and associated costs for each project.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Trustee Calvert.
Yes, catch her.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, and we want to thank you and the entire Capital Facilities team. We know this has been just an incredible few years, and it's going to continue on, and we're very, very much appreciative of the incredible work being done by the team, so, and all of the contractors that work with us as well. Okay, great. Now we will move on to 4.02, which is Presentation and Possible Action to Approve the Professional Services Contract for Architects Plus LLC for Design Services for the Darrell C. Swope Middle School CMAR Expansion. That is Construction Manager at Risk and Renovation Project in the total amount of $2,520,000. And, Ms. Weatherly?
So it's, it's us again. We're asking for design money, you gave us, you guys just approved the $1 million to that, and this will complete the design portion and funding it for Architects Plus to really hit the ground running with that design at Swope and work, start, start working with our Construction Manager at Risk, United Construction, and we thought it was appropriate to put it after the approval of the funding so that you guys had a chance to vote on it independently.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I just had a question I forgot to ask at the last part two about Swope. So I know that the principal and the staff were involved in a lot of that feasibility work, but I also know that there's a new principal who hasn't, you know, had the opportunity to be in that space as long, and I just wondered what your thoughts are in kind of moving forward with the plan to include a staff and, I think, kind of the principal, but, you know, that sort of person that knows the building and knows, how are you going to keep them involved in that process?
So we have weekly design meetings once we start, and the principal is part of that as well as the SFC, because he knows how that building functions. He was a part of the original design with these schematics that you'll see, so we very much keep them involved because they know how that functions, how the students use the spaces, and how we need to remodel them and make them more useful for them. So we will, we've reached out to Mr. Nakashima, and we will continue to do that. In fact, as soon as we get this all approved, we're going to hit the ground running tomorrow, and he knows we'll be on his doorstep.
Great. I think it's also great to have a new set of eyes that isn't used to the space, so I think that's great, and I know the facilities, I forget what.
Site Facility Coordinator.
Site Facility Coordinator. He knows that building probably better than anyone, so that's great.
We really rely on them for their expertise at the sites.
I can make a motion?
Please do.
Even though my daughter will be attending school during this time of construction, I will still, at Swope, I'm very excited that we're able to take this step, and it's going to make a huge impact, not just on the overcrowding of that particular school, but I know so many of the feeder schools are overcrowded, and being able to move sixth grade to Swope is going to make a huge impact on that whole community. So gladly make the motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the Professional Services Contract for the Architecture Services between Architects Plus and the Washoe County School District for the Darrell C. Swope Middle School Expansion and Renovation in the total amount of $2,520,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caudill. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. All right. And now we've come to the pesky part of our agenda, pest management. And I, I appreciate, we have some folks in the audience who brought this forward as a request that we have a presentation about integrated pest management. So thank you all for being responsive to that request, Adam and Charlie and Mark. I don't know if I've met you before, but nice to meet you, and I'm sure we'll have some public comment on this as well. So, Adam, take it away.
Thank you. Adam Cersei, Chief Facilities Management Officer, will try and keep it out of the weeds for you.
Oh, boy.
Just keep it light.
Oh, yeah, yes.
As you, as you stated in your introduction.
Yeah, you've been holding on to that all day.
I, you know, I've got it a couple of times, we're bringing up the rear.
Okay.
Have some fun with it. We wanted to tell a brief story, give an overview of our current program, basically what we do and how we do it, kind of in this realm. We're going to hear a little bit about chemical pesticides that we apply to our exterior grounds, but also there's more to this program as far as insects and rodents and things that we have to deal with from time to time. Have a number of policies and best practices that we use currently, and really, our goal is to entertain discussion here today, clarify any misunderstandings, possibly receive feedback going forward. Really, again, wanted to bring Charlie and Mark, they're in our Facilities Management Department, boots on the ground, much more knowledgeable about this, walk through some of the details, and then I'll wrap it up with a little bit more on Assembly Bill 205, which passed this session, that actually requires the creation of a formal integrated pest management policy. We have some informal ones within our department, but this is one that we be working on with Board Services and in compliance with this AB 205. So continuing on.
Perfect. For the record, I'm Charlie, housekeeping and maintenance director. Thanks, Adam. I'll kick things off. First, I wanted to talk about integrated pest management, what that is, just so we kind of know, as we go down the rest of the presentation, it falls underneath, particularly pesticides fall underneath that category. The idea of, of the integrated pest management is really to protect students and, and the environment, but using controlled methods of, what's, what controls can we establish to reduce any impact to the environment and/or the public? So as an example, we have, and all those products are typically, are under the laws of products and, and by the FDA, and most of the, matter of fact, I think, all the products that we use in-house would be, are non-restrictive. So if it's restrictive, then it's a key word for saying, there's guidelines you need to follow, and there's a special requirement. So the nice thing about it, that's kind of the first step, that we try to use products that's the least hazardous materials as we can, and then from there, we try to use a few, the less amount of products possible. Next bullet there, the Certified Pesticide Applicator, that's a certification that one of our groundskeepers on Mark's staff holds a certification. What that really is, that education he has is about what products to use, even though some of the products are, most, all the products are not restrictive, but it still gives him the knowledge to how, to use the other chemicals that we use, the pesticides. And so anyways, just want to note, that's part of the new AB 205 bill, is requiring that certification, somebody on staff that knows the, knows and is able to support education to our district staff and the use of the product. So kind of a little off track here, but just kind of, once again, this is, we've, housekeeping currently has a guideline, and it has had it for quite some time. We've been using that as a tool for educating our SFC Site Facility Coordinators and our in-house staff, folks like on Mark's crew. So, and so we have that existing policy, which really makes it easy for us to fall and comply with the new law that's passed, that's going to take effect in 2020, I think it's January 2020, so, which is kind of nice, we're set up for it. There's a few details that we're going to tighten up as far as our notifications of when we do use a product at a school site. Nice thing about it, we've already established, we track all the product we'll use at a location, the date, time, and all those details. So we, we have good records, and we'll just continue on with that path.
Madam President?
Yes.
A quick question. On the policies and procedures, and that's actually a great picture that leads me to the question I have about policies and procedures. So if a member of your custodial team or groundskeeping team saw a weed like that, would they, do the policies and procedures just say, spray it, it dies and goes away, or just pull it, pull it by hand? How, how do they make a judgment? I mean, I would, I would prefer pulling it, but maybe there's certain instances where it's better to spray something like that, so just, how does that work? How do they have people on the ground decide whether to spray something, or pull it, or do something else?
Great question. That's, that's really kind of the, the heart of the integrated pest management policy. Usually, use the least amount of chemicals possible, so if they can manage it on-site, that's what we require them to do. If it's either through mechanical means, is ideally possible, just to control it, or using equipment, what have you, and Mark will talk a little bit more on that in a minute, but that's the ideal. But if the space is too large, it's not physically able to do it with one person or trying to manage it, then that's the point where often the, the sites will either submit a request for assistance, and then we'll either make a decision if we need to go out and spray, or provide some other support, either disposal of the material, equipment, those kind of things.
I'd just like to add, since you commented on that photo, we included that one in particular, and can let these guys elaborate, that's, I don't know the Latin name for it, but puncture vine, that we see at a number of our sites that can, you know, be a safety issue, and is something that, you know, it's more than just dandelions that we're talking about here, so.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, that's a good example, that's one of the, it doesn't appear to be too hazardous or concerning at this point, but mostly, also referring to us goat heads, they produce a, go, virtually a little seed pod, that's very sharp. And so they go, you know, once they get set, there's like hundreds of them per plant, so once they get out of control, then it becomes another issue from there on, year after year. So that's, we'd really try to stay up on top of the puncture vine. And sometimes it also make them into the classrooms, either on the, the student's shoes, and then make it get into the carpet, and then it becomes a housekeeping area. So that's something, that's why we focus on is trying to keep those, one of our highlighted pests. Another alternative, we do, I do want to mention that we work at the Nevada Department of Agricultural, Culture on, excuse me, they also provide some funding for us too. Some of the funding we get from them, it's minor, but they, any fines or fees that they administer to folks that have, were cited for violations, we do receive some funding for that. And that funding is not for us to buy chemicals or product, what the funding is allocated for is to either buy containers, thresholds on the doors to help keep pests out. So that's part of the integrated pest management methods we use, is trying to figure out ways to keep the pest out with the minimum amount of effort, so. Let me hit the next slide here. One second here. Already mentioned about the products, the, want to step back to housekeeping a little bit, and then we'll kind of dive into the Roundup category a little bit more. Housekeeping does, for the most part, administers the policy we have, because they're really instrumental of having staff at each, each one of the schools and providing guidance. So they, they administer the policy that we have currently, which deals with calls we'll get for regarding everything from cockroaches to rodents to wasps, spiders, of course, weeds. And then they're required to typically monitor, and that's part of the plan, is to make sure they're monitoring their location on a regular basis, and that's part of the new law, you have to have a system that checks and balances every two weeks to ensure that you're not getting infested by some type of pest. And so anyways, that, and then the other component is going to deal with the Roundup portion of the pesticide, and I'm going to hand it over to Mark Hale, he's going to talk a little bit more about kind of the history and some of those other methods and means we've used most recently.
Hi, my name is Mark Hale, I'm the ground supervisor. I've been the ground supervisor for 20 years, so basically, I'm the person that's responsible. One of my duties is managing and overseeing all of the weed abatement in the district. And basically, we have one herbicide applicator for the whole district.
Wow.
And along with help from our sites, we use, the only chemical that we use currently and in the last 20 years that I've been here is Roundup, and it's gone from Roundup to Roundup Promax, same thing, different, different concentration. Until last year, up until last year, this year, we came, into this season, we came up with a pilot program, we're using alternatives, which in the past, we have used alternative methods, since its manual eradication, either by hand, weed eater, mower, other than chemical, and we try to do that as an answer to Scott's question. We try to do that if possible. The sites, we usually have to manage that, but it is a little bit difficult, as you saw the picture of the puncture vine that was up there. That particular plant probably was about three to five days old, and that's how fast it grows. And it usually comes on in, in, in September, it's, it takes a temperature probably usually over 80 degrees before that actually starts to propagate, and when it comes on, it comes on fast. So in the beginning of the year, usually, we'll, we'll start our program in April, probably April 15th, depending on weather, and we start a spraying program at that time, and we work along with the sites, with manual eradication of any weeds, and, and work our way through, probably mid-July, maybe sooner, just depending on weather conditions. This year's a pretty bad year, so we've probably made one spray application at this time at most of the sites, and then we'll have to go back and make further applications because of the puncture vine and the tall white top, and any of the other noxious weeds that don't respond to one application. Because we use a lowest concentration possible of the Roundup mix, and that's a 2% concentration. It's just, we feel that we, that's the best bang for the buck. It does eradicate probably 95% of our weeds with one application, but there are a lot of other weeds out there that don't respond that well. It'll knock them down a little bit, and we usually hit those, or a puncture vine that comes in in the later season. But back to, starting in this year, we started a test program for alternative organic products. We haven't really found a, a lot of products out there that are organic, that work very well. We're currently testing at three different sites, a product called Suppress EC, it's an organic compound, it's basically an acid, but we haven't had really good results with it yet. I believe we have a picture here, this is at Swope Middle School, oh, excuse me, not Swope, it's Pine Middle School. And they have a, we call it no man's land, but there's an area in the back that they don't really use that much, so it's just usually, if we don't eradicate it, it's usually full of weeds. If you can see on this picture that we provided here, on the left-hand side, that's basically what it looked like 14 days after it was sprayed with Suppress, and an up-close picture of a milkweed on the right-hand side, which basically just shows a typical burning of the, of the leaf, and that's all we pretty much got out of Suppress. So what we're going to do, and that was at a 3% concentration, so we're going to double that concentration and spray it again, and just to get the results, because we're in the test phase of that at this time. But those are the results we came up with, and we'll just, we'll continue to work with that and other products.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, and I, I really appreciate the, the testing. I think, you know, it's, it's great, we, we always want to see, is there a better way we can be doing things, and I appreciate the, the efforts of the staff to, to look for some alternatives. I'll let you guys keep going with your presentation, I know there's a few more slides.
Okay, so just a little bit to wrap it up, talk a little bit about this AB 205 that just was signed into law. We have already begun working with Lisa Scurry to kind of, you know, formalize what we already have in place with what is required in this new legislation. It does, those are some quotes, specifically require personnel to be designated to oversee and manage this policy, with some education and training requirements, as Charlie alluded to. Also, you know, some of the, the language, the verbiage in those bullets, the use of non-chemical management before use of pesticides or herbicides, the use of pesticides or herbicides in a manner that creates the lowest possible risk, you know, some best practice language, guiding principles to help us, you know, not every situation's created equal, but this guiding policy that helps form our decision-making process moving forward. It wasn't a source of real concern for us going through the legislature, that, you know, the, the draft language was representative of the primary components of our current program, that, you know, it's just basically being formalized into a school district policy per this Assembly Bill going forward, again, I think, January 2020, we need to have this finalized. So, you know, in essence, kind of just to wrap it up, I wanted to emphasize, we, we feel like we not only have the essence of this integrated pest management policy already in place, but that in many instances go above and beyond what's, what's required. We talked about the certified herbicide applicator through the State Department of Agriculture. Charlie and Mark have both held that certification at times in the past actively, not active today. We do have someone on staff who does all of this application, who has that active certification. That's not something that's required for use of, of these products, but it is really a, a higher standard and best practice, really, to have that level of education, expertise, not only pertaining to the, the proper use, or the hazards of the, the products, but the proper application of it. So wind conditions, the tracking of the product, the time of day, that, that individual works like a 4:00 AM to 1:00 PM shift, really, getting out there when the winds are low before anyone's on-site, things of that nature, just standard in our operation. But again, balancing those safety requirements with the cost-effective, most cost-effective strategy possible. So as Mark alluded to, they've done a great job over the years of sort of eradicating some of these species. That prior picture of Double Diamond Elementary School, it's an area of this region that's plagued with white top, it's an incredibly invasive, difficult-to-control weed, and that's actually what's up on this slide here. You saw the playground is clean of debris, or clean of weeds from that particular shot. So, you know, it's a balance, and we're certainly always looking to improve manual labor versus more time-efficient chemical weed abatement process, and then just balancing the costs of those materials and safety, always open to improvement, experimenting with our, you know, exploring new products. At this time, you know, still really in the testing phase of that. So again, wanted to give you guys an overview of what we do now, and really open it up for further discussion.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before we, I think we probably have some public comment on this. Okay, yeah, Jackie?
So, Ms. Calvert? So, this one, she said it was 14 days that she'd gone out there.
And you checked it, so, and you put a chemical on there. So how much longer would you wait before you did another test to see what would work to completely get rid of that particular weed?
We're giving it 14 days.
Okay.
Roundup will kill in two to four days, depending on the heat, up until, up to 14 days, so we're giving it the benefit of the doubt, and we're going a total 14 days, and then we're coming back 14 days. we're coming back 14 days after that, and do a second application with twice the concentration. Just so, we're just in the testing phase to see if it's, we're actually even going to get what we call a total kill out of the weed. And if not, then we'll probably move to a different product.
So do you keep like records of like agri-naught on this day?
And you just continually track that as you move forward?
My herbicide applicator actually has from the state of Nevada Agricultural Department, a log for logging pesticides, which is, again, it's not required, but we've used it for over 20 years. It's a real simple form. It tracks the date, the time, the area, the amount of area sprayed, the concentration, and the product that was sprayed.
Thank you.
And also, like, the weather conditions, approximate wind speeds, things like that nature that are relevant from a safety standpoint.
So the wind would possibly like blow it away, or what have you?
It's, they call it drift.
Okay.
And you don't want it to drift where you don't want it to be.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Is it 10 mile an hour typically? Like, they'll call the operation off. If it's a particularly windy day, they've got to scratch the work and come back when the weather conditions are suitable from a safety standpoint.
Trustee Cottle?
Thank you. Are you sensitive to how much chemical you apply to a certain area, say, an exterior fence versus the playground where the kids are?
Typically, we spray the same amount anywhere. It's a three, like I said, it's a, anywhere from a 2% to 2.5% concentration on the Roundup. The part where we're sensitive would be when we spray and when the kids would be on the playground. So we, like, said earlier, that we start probably approximately 4:00, 4:30 in the mornings, dependent on the time of year. And we try to get in there, and we'll spray the grounds earlier than that. And then we'll move to areas like a fence line, or an area like this that we'd call it no man's land, where there's really not a lot of child activity, that we can spray later on in the day.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I've read about other school districts that will use, they'll partner with the local farm, and they'll use goats, like they'll have goats come to a school. And I mean, goats, there are some weeds that goats won't eat, but goats will eat just about every other weed you can think of. And the school districts that I've read about like this because it's, you know, it's natural, it's something, it's a partnership that they usually do with the community, and they also find ways to integrate curriculum with the students and the goats. And I'm just wondering if, is that something that has been talked about or looked at? Is there potential for a pilot to see if, you know, a couple goats can go to a school and eat up the weeds and do curriculum with it as well?
Well, it is a possibility. One problem is, is dealing with the health department with having the goats on the property is, somebody's got to clean that up. So it's something that has been addressed in the past, and has been talked about. I actually, I know a couple people that actually rent the goats out for weed abatement. Not really something that would be conducive to the school district, because usually, we try not to let the weeds get that bad to where goats have to come and eat them. The kids wouldn't be able to play on the playground if we let it go that far. But it is, it's a viable option.
Washoe County's been doing that for years, in some of their park areas, so, yep.
What about horses? Can we do horses?
Okay, are there other questions before we hear from our public comment? Okay, let's go ahead. Welcome, Robert, and thank you for being patient for the last two and a half hours waiting to get to this item.
Thank you, and thank you, trustees, and thank you, gentlemen, for your time. I really appreciate your time and consideration. My name is Rob, Rob Dunmore, for the record. And my background, I'm a credentialed high school science teacher as well, and I've been in education for over 20 years. My undergrad was Parks and Natural Resource Management, and specific emphasis in environmental education and environmental interpretation. I'm a naturalist and a wildlife biologist, so do environmental education with kids. And I currently work in a couple different urban farm projects and garden projects in our community, education, and helped put on Earth Day this year, the Truckee Meadows Earth Day. I also helped co-found and co-lead a group called Pesticide-Free Reno, and we're on Facebook, so you can find us, and that's my background. I got into this because I had a group of kids at Idyllwild Park, and we were taking a break in between the skate park in the morning and a swimming pool in the afternoon. And as we sat eating our sandwiches at Idyllwild Park, a guy came by and sprayed glyphosate literally on our kids' sandwiches, within feet. And I was flabbergasted, so I asked the gentleman, what are you spraying? And he didn't even have a protective mask or gloves, so he told me it was Roundup. And it could be Roundup, it could be rodeo, it could be any number of marketable things, but it's glyphosate that we're talking about specifically. So I got concerned, and so I started to look into what our practices were in our community. And it led me into a year-long investigation, a big learning process about our parks, our designated pesticide-free parks, our county, so all of the sites that the county operates for Public Works, HOAs, which is a large body of people that spray, and landscape associations that go with those HOAs, so private home ownership as well, and commercial real estate as well. And then we had a clue that the Washoe County School District is also a government agency that's sizable, and also cares for our most precious resource, our kids. And the kids don't vote, and they don't have a voice to vote. So it's us that make those decisions for them. And so we got concerned about what the practices have been for Washoe County School District, and that led us to here. So again, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. We hope to catch more bees with honey, if that makes sense, than the opposite. And I don't want to just complain and point fingers, but I want to make sure that the information's out there, that we have all the available options, and that we're really making the best decisions in our forward thinking. I appreciate the earnest effort to minimize it, but minimizing is still a risk. And if there's a 1% chance that one child can get hurt from this, then how could we and why would we ever poison our school sites, our community, and our environment? And that's the question I leave you with, because three minutes is very short. I have a lot to say, and I sure hope we can open it up into a discussion, but there's goats, there's horticultural vinegar, there's organic practices, there's steam treatments. They're not going to do the same thing as Roundup. However, they won't cause non-Hodgkin's lymphoma in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Ms. Davidson, welcome. And again, thank you for your patience today. You have three minutes.
Okay. Also a member of Pesticide-Free Reno, and a staff member of the national nonprofit GMO-Free USA. My husband and I owned a local tea company, which we converted to all-organic nearly 20 years ago, and I've, I served for a long time on the Nevada Organic Council. Since then, I've been involved in research and education concerning organic food and landscape chemicals, which are now very much in the news. We're here today to ask the district to actually suspend use of glyphosate that we've been talking about, then to begin looking at natural approaches to the care of schoolyards and athletic fields. Many school communities have already banned glyphosate, finding it much too dangerous to use. These include districts in Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New York, many districts in California, including Irvine, Los Angeles, Gilroy, Santa Monica, and many more. Universities include Harvard, Yale, University of Colorado, and the entire UC system. Also, at this point, many U.S. cities have acted to ban glyphosate. The maker of this herbicide, Bayer, formerly Monsanto, has recently lost three lawsuits, close to $2.5 billion, to be paid to victims of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Juries determined, based on scientific evidence, their diseases were caused by spraying Roundup over a prolonged period. One of these individuals was a school landscape worker. 13,400 new lawsuits are awaiting trial at this time. We also anticipate that some of the agencies involved as employers of the victims may be targets of lawsuits and possibly denied insurance coverage as time goes by. Cancer isn't the only condition tied to glyphosate. We also have non-alcoholic fatty liver disease, birth defects, infertility, and a host of neurological conditions, including Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and autism. Many pediatricians have pointed out that children are particularly vulnerable to the effects of chemicals because of their size, rapid growth, and endocrine development. Also, that they spend so much time on the ground, playing, sifting through grass and dirt, et cetera. We simply just can't justify the use of this chemical in our schoolyards any longer. We can work on this together. We'd be happy to come back with more information to answer any questions you might have, and any other help we might be able to offer. Thanks.
Thank you. Jan Gilbert? Ms. Gilbert, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you for your hard work. And I want to thank the staff, because she was so helpful to me. I've never been to the school board meeting, and I'm glad to be able to come here. I've lived in Washoe County for 37 years. I was a teacher at one time. I was an advocate. I've done a lot of different things. But I moved to Reno about two years ago, and I bought a home right on the edge of an elementary school. I've been an organic gardener for 48 years. And I moved to this lovely playground, just beautiful. The grounds are lovely. The children are delightful. We love the sounds. We love seeing them cartwheel and do their thing. And one day, I got up early, and unfortunately, it was about 6, no, excuse me, it was at 8:00 in the morning, and we saw a truck spraying around the perimeter of the yard, on the dirt area. But Hunter Lake is really, they play on the whole yard. And it's a lovely, lovely playground. And they were spraying, and I got alarmed. I saw the gentleman do the whole playground, and I took pictures, I posted it on Facebook. I was upset. And I saw him get out of his truck, and he had a sprayer, and he was going around spotting where he thought he had missed. He had no gloves, no mask, nothing. It was in May, and it was half an hour before the school started. Because I know, the kids show up about 8:30, and they run around and play and have a great old time for half an hour. And I was alarmed, and I did call, I think I emailed all of you, and I really appreciate Katie Holland responding to me. I then also talked to Mr. Cersei, who was very kind and honest with me about what they were using, and it was glyphosate. And I, I really, you know, we disagreed, but he was very respectful of my opinions. I'm concerned about those children, those teachers, our wildlife, our river. Hunter Lake is not far from the Truckee River. You know, there are underground waterways. And I'm just very concerned about the use of glyphosate. The last thing I want to say is, so I've been bugging people for about a year, and this year, sure enough, right around May, they came and sprayed before recess. 15 minutes before recess, they were spraying that dirt. And I know Katie got my email, and I was just heartbroken. To me, it was very upsetting. So this is more than just integrated pest management. This is probably individuals who are trying to do their job and get those weeds, but they don't know, they shouldn't be doing it anytime near those children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Connie Silbera? Ms. Silbera, welcome back.
Hi, thank you. Just two quick things. Thanks for trying alternatives. I really appreciate it. I hope you do accelerate that, and that's awesome. But I have one other kind of dumb question. Does this pest management, does that include things used for lice? Or is that a different department, or a different?
It is, it is a different department. We have a, we have a health program in our schools, and nurses, and, yes.
Okay, so that would have a different, okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Okay. Elise Weatherly? Where are the kids? Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
Try to push something? Okay. Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. First of all, you guys, thank you. Thank you for taking care of stuff. I really appreciate it. Just to let you know, I was diagnosed with a terminal brain tumor August of 2015. And so while I was kind of home waiting to die, you know, I would catch these little things on TV, and here was this advertisement from this attorney going, were you diagnosed with lymphoma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma tumors? Well, call us, because we've got a lawsuit against Roundup. So I called my lawn guy, I called Jeff Markowitz from Vital &amp; Green, and I said, is there a possibility that Roundup could have caused this tumor? And he laughed, and he goes, no. And come to find out, it really doesn't have any terrible problems. He'd been working with this for decades and never had anything wrong. Oh, by the way, terminal brain tumors can go away, and they can be brought on by stress. So I just wanted to say that, thank you. Thank you for taking care of business. Oh, is there any way you can just like bring in a machine and just dig up the dirt? That seems to me like it would be so much more cost-effective. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly, and we're glad that you recovered.
Thank you. Are you sure?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to comment, Mark, on why we can't just grind them up and have all their seeds go right back into the soil?
It really wouldn't be cost-effective. For one, and there's a lot of other things. It wouldn't be cost-effective. Once you till the soil, the propagation rate's probably going to go way up. And then you're going to have a surface that the kids are going to play on that's probably going to be, it could be muddy, uneven, you know, something like that.
Okay, thanks, thanks for responding. Is there any other public comment, JJ? Okay. Well, I appreciate the willingness of you all to look at some other solutions, and I think these folks can certainly help with the research that they've done. I'm sure you guys have talked with them about what other options there are that other agencies are using, who have been in our situation and have lots of grounds to take care of and want to make sure that we don't have weeds on them. And I have shared with folks, and I am a very strong believer that we do need to phase out the use of glyphosate at our schools. There is a tremendous amount of research. There certainly are people that have used Roundup that have not gotten cancer, just like there are people who smoke until they're 90 and they don't get lung cancer, but that doesn't mean we should still be recommending it. And certainly, this is a big debate in my house, because my husband is a huge believer in Roundup. He's out there with the Roundup. But I just feel strongly about it personally. This is not an action item, this is an item for discussion, but I want to make sure that folks, you know, hear from me. I think we have a tremendous amount of information now about court cases, validation. In fact, one of the first cases that was awarded a multimillion-dollar settlement from Monsanto, now owned by Bayer, was a school groundskeeper. So just wanted to share my thoughts about it, and certainly open it up for any other discussion by the board. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll share mine. First of all, thank you for being willing to look at alternatives, you know, in light of all this. It isn't easy, I mean, you've been a supervisor for over 20 years, you said, so you know your stuff, Mark, and so it isn't easy to make some changes. So I thank you for that, and I wanted to encourage you to continue to look and see what other alternative might be there, so we can make sure that we are keeping our children safe. But at the same time, I know you have a job to do, but I just want to concur that if we can get away from this, even if we phase and find something else that can work, I'd be all for that. I think that's, that's effort, those are efforts worth making, so thank you for leading that charge.
Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, same thing. I mean, you guys are very knowledgeable, you're on the grounds, using the products that you know that work. So, but I definitely would just like to, you know, keep looking at alternatives. I mean, maybe, maybe steam works good, maybe goats work bad.
Oh. You knew that was coming, did you?
Yeah, I've been holding that in for a while.
Yeah. He's been waiting.
And I know that we have policies and procedures, so it might be a good thing in the future. I don't know where the policies and procedures for pest management are, but maybe we can, as a board, we can review those at some point in the future, and just see if maybe we should say, you know, no pesticide spraying two hours before school starts, or maybe it can only be done on weekends, or just something that we could kind of think about and look at. But just keep up the good work, and just keep looking at alternatives that may or may not work.
Appreciate that. Anyone else? Well, and again, I too thank you, and I also thank the folks that are out there taking care of our grounds. I know it's been a huge challenge, and I know they had a lot of uncertainty during our budget process, and... And we so appreciate the great work that they do. And I know they are hugely understaffed, and so we're very grateful for that. And we're not, we're not, at least I'm not wanting to add more burden to them. And I know it's, you know, it feels like that if we're going to get rid of the thing that we know works 100% of the time quickly. I know it feels like a burden, but I really appreciate that you are looking at other things. And I, for me, it's really about the children's safety, but it's also about our staff's safety. We want to make sure that that they're safe and that we're we're doing everything we can to make sure that we take care of them as well. So this is just a discussion item, so I think you've heard some comments. Any other comments from board members? Okay, well, again, thank you very much, and thank you to our guests who came and shared their perspectives. And I hope we'll continue to work together to see if we can find some workable solutions. So thank you so much, guys. Okay, that takes us to board reports. Is there anything that board members want to report besides having a wonderful time at 18 high school graduations, which was phenomenal, just absolutely heartwarming? Anyone have anything else they want to share at this point? Okay. Acting Superintendent, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Just real quickly, on the point of graduations, I wanted to send a shout out to Vanji Russell, who coordinates all of those graduations. And she does a phenomenal job to our school police officers for their diligence and for helping all of our high schools have a safe graduation. Nutrition Services, who did a phenomenal job, and they staff it and feed you also and feed leadership team. And then also to our leadership team, who we have received a lot of comments from our principals, who truly love it when our leadership team shows up to those. And then to our grant staff, the floodgates have opened, and so all of our our universal hiring forms are out there, and our pre-K programs are getting staffed, teachers are being hired. So that's really exciting for our schools. And finally, summer graduation, August 9th. So we're excited about that. We'll get some more graduates across those stages. And then finally, just a happy next phase of their life. Mr. Richard Swanberg, our area superintendent, is retiring. And then also our executive assistant in the Office of School Leadership, Ms. Janet Peraldo, is retiring. So congratulations to them as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McNeil. Okay, any future agenda item requests? I think it might be great to have a report back at an appropriate time on what we've just talked about and how the testing goes for for those alternatives, if you don't mind. And anyone else for future agenda item requests? Okay, is there any closing public comment?
Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly, you are just having a great day.
I'm here, I'm on an assignment, so you know, I try to do the best job I can. Okay, so here are some to-do items, okay? Truckee Meadows Community College for the high school, they have a terrible administrative staff, but they've got wonderful teachers. Ace High School has amazing teachers and a terrible HR staff. Pine Middle School is wonderful in both regards, and so is Sparks Middle School. All I'm saying is that you had said that we want an unbiased audit of things, right? And what I have noticed is that we have a tendency to stick with our own kind. And somebody had mentioned, I think it was you had mentioned, a different set of eyes, right? I think that is such a good idea for every single element of running any kind of a business is to get somebody else's perspective of what works and what doesn't work. I love the goat idea. I love the goat idea. I did, it makes me want to like Stevie Nicks, "Stand Back." Yeah, we love goats. All I can say is the community talks to each other. They do not, that sex education thing that they had a few weeks ago, that John Epelito was there, they had hours worth of people standing up and saying, don't do this. And it was done anyway. Why would they do that? I don't know. I think that I can teach my grandson, I go, don't smoke weed and and hold yourself for your wife, right? I think I can do stuff like that. The school board unfortunately has a bad reputation. I think that's something that can be turned around. As far as payroll goes and position goes, working in payroll for decades, everything needs to have an assignment to it, positions and everything. I would highly recommend going to an accounting system, a payroll system, and an HR system that was easy to use and provided good information. As far as Roundup goes, I am for Roundup, and I am against Gary Carano and Barack Obama and my daughter, because I think all three of those had a serious effect on my brain tumor. The stress that was put on me by those three people was enormous. Just to let you know, too, I have been in communication with child support because I'm going, why am I having to foot the bill for child support when you guys won't do anything to cause this person, who is grad student of the year, by the way, UNR, but she likes her drugs and alcohol? And so she gets away with not having to help me raise a person. I think that's not good. Truckee Meadows High School 2.41, in partnership with them, I would I would beg somebody to please take a look, Thomas, Tomas Macalusa, and their procedures for allowing students to come in and for rejecting students. Their technique is unfair, and it's very biased. And I would ask, beg, please. And as far as goals go, I guess we have to know, what are our goals? What are our future goals? It's it's for the country, right? It's for the kids, but it's for the country. We want it to be in a good shape in the future. So I think our goal should be that we teach the good kids how to be good citizens. And as far as nutritional services go, all the kids hate the food. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Okay.
Michelle.
Oh, sorry.
One more. Michelle Engbretson?
Welcome, Ms. Engbretson.
Hi, I'm glad I get to close. Hi, for the record, I'm Michelle Engbretson. Good job. And I am the principal at a district-sponsored charter school, Bailey Charter Elementary here in Reno. And I am here, my husband is also with the district. He's in Capitol Projects as a project manager. And he will be very pleased that I got to follow up after the pest control. And I do notice that the public comment gets a little bit lighter towards the end of the meeting, so I'm glad I'm last. We are going to be following up to present to the board, request an agenda time to present to the board as a follow-up to our monitoring report. We had a very difficult year last year, and it was reflected in our monitoring, but we want to share what we are doing at our school. And our school of 265 students, that is a district-sponsored school, is so small in comparison to the district, that we have our own little district there, and it is wonderful. And I would love for any of you to come and visit our school. And I do not like speaking in front of adults, so this last piece is so incredibly important to me, for me to stand up in front and say this, but I want to thank you as a board. And I know how hard your job is, and I couldn't imagine. So while we may not always always agree with everybody, you do have support. And you may not be hearing it because we're just not as loud, but you do have it, and we thank you. And thank you for what you do for my school and for being there for us.
Thank you, Ms. Engbretson. And thank you what you're doing for the kids at your school, very special group. Okay, all right. Well, that closes our public comment. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, July 23rd at 4:00 p.m., Ms. Silvera. And we also will have a special meeting on July 1st, beginning at 8:00 a.m. here. And with that, we are adjourned.